Okay, Mayor, I have my devices rolling and the floor is yours.
Great, thank you. Good evening, this is the regular meeting of the City of Morro Bay City Council. It is Tuesday, May 25th, 2021, it's 5:30 PM. This meeting is being held via teleconference pursuant to Section 3 of the Executive Order Number N 29-20 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17th, 2020. This meeting will be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on cable channel 20 and streamed on the city website. Please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus, the Veterans Hall will not be open for this meeting. Public participation will be via Zoom or telephone and the information when public comment is called for will be displayed by the clerk on the screen so that you can access that. Well, good evening, Madam Clerk, would you establish a quorum, please?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Addis?
Here.
Councilmember Barton?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
I am present.
Councilmember Heller?
Here.
And Mayor Heding.
Present, thank you. With that, in your own way, if we could just ask for a moment of silence, please, thank you. Thank you for that, and if I could ask Councilmember Heller to lead us in the pledge this evening, I would appreciate that very much if you'll display the flag, please.
Okay, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller, for that, appreciate it. We will go ahead and ask our city attorney, do we have a closed session report, Chris?
Good evening, Mayor, no closed session items to report.
Thank you. Pardon me. Technology. We'll go ahead with Councilmember reports, let me start if I could with Councilmember Addis, do you have any reports this evening?
I do, thank you. I did want to invite the public, on June 7th, I will have State Senator John Laird as a guest with me on Afternoons with Addis, and you can find that information on my social media, DonAddisCityCouncil, or my newsletter, you can sign up at DonAddis.com, but we would love for all of you to join us to hear from State Senator John Laird, he is working on many of the initiatives that are important to Morro Bay as well as California in general. And then on May 19th, I attended the Morro Bay National Estuary Program as the council liaison, they also have good news with their funding and an excellent work plan moving forward that includes protections and monitoring for the estuary and other spaces near Morro Bay, and you can find out more on their website at MBNEP.org. And then I also attended the Homeless Services Oversight Council, otherwise known as HSOC, on May 19th, and one of the most important things that came up is that it's been very slow going with rent assistance, and many people are paying rent at the expense of other debt, so rather than paying certain bills or paying off other things, they're paying their rent and then their other debt is growing, so folks who need rental assistance can apply at housing.ca.gov, and again, that's H-O-U-S-I-N-G.ca.gov, and the moratorium does end on June 30th, but they're really encouraging people to apply if you need support with rent. And those are all my announcements, hopefully I'll see everyone on June 7th with Senator John Laird.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Addis. Councilmember Heller, sir, any announcements?
Yeah, I'd like to take a minute to recognize and thank one of our many nonprofits here in Morro Bay, Morro Bay Beautiful. This organization headed by Ann and Ron Reisner have raised $40,000 to commission original artwork by the folk artist Eric Dowdle. Mr. Dowdle has become renowned for his paintings depicting various cities around the world, just in the United States, which he then converts to puzzles which are sold in around the world as well. Morro Bay Beautiful has raised $40,000 to commission Mr. Dowdle to do a folk art painting of the city of Morro Bay, taken from the perspective of sanspitt looking back at the Embarcadero. This work is underway. In addition, I'd like to thank Morro Bay Tbit for contributing $5,000 to this cause in order to get puzzles made and put in local stores, and we think it's a great marketing opportunity, and Tbit has agreed, so this is very exciting. I encourage you to go on his website, which is dowdlefolkart.com, D-O-W-D-L-E-F-O-L-K-A-R-T.com. Take a look at his artwork, which is on its way to becoming a puzzle that would be sold in local stores and potentially around the world, which is a great marketing opportunity long-term for our city, and it's all due to the efforts of Morro Bay Beautiful and the Reisners and their great team, and I hope at some point that the city of Morro Bay will add additional funds to ensure that these puzzles get made, but it's just a great opportunity and great effort by a local nonprofit, and I wanted to acknowledge them at tonight's meeting, so thank you, thank you, Morro Bay Beautiful.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Heller, appreciate that. Councilmember Davis, sir, any announcements?
No, I have none tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Councilmember Barton, announcements?
None for me tonight.
Okay, that brings it to me, well, this will be the last week for the three clinics for vaccinations provided by the county, San Luis Obispo Clinic at Questa College, Aurora Grande Clinic, as well as the Paso Robles Clinic will be closing and moving to mobile pod vaccination sites, and thanks to our own Chief Knuckles, we had, I believe it was, was it last evening? Looking for Chief Knuckles, we had a clinic here in Morro Bay at the Catholic Church, and appreciate our own city staff being involved in that, but I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that vaccinations will continue in pods, you can go on readyslow.org to find out where those pods will be on a weekly basis. Steve, I see you chiming in, I was trying to remember when it was, was it last evening?
We had one last night at St. Timothy's, and then we had one the Monday previous at the Monday Night Dinner.
Fantastic, well, we thank our police, excuse me, our fire staff for doing that, and it's good to have pods available locally, but again, you can go on readyslow.org to determine where they might be having these pop-up pods available. In addition, most retail pharmacies have vaccines available, and you can make appointments there for those of you that haven't gotten vaccinated, and I highly encourage all of our eligible population now 12 and older to get vaccinated against COVID-19. We also received news today, very good news, as you know, the city's been working for over five years with the inter-agency task force for the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management out of Washington DC on the wind farm or wind energy project off of the coast of Morro Bay. That has been pretty much delayed over the last four to five years because of Department of Defense issues, and our own Congressman Carbohall has been working hard to move that initiative forward. Today, the federal government announced that they plan to open more than 250,000 acres off of California coast to wind development. The Biden administration announced Tuesday as part of a major effort to ramp up the nation's renewable energy and to cut its climate warning emissions. Under the plan, the administration would allow wind power projects to be built in federal waters off of the coast of central California northwest of Morro Bay, as well as a second location west of Humboldt Bay. Officials estimate that the two areas combined could generate 4,600 megawatts of electricity, enough to power 1.6 million homes. This is a very important announcement for the city of Morro Bay, as you know, Councilmember Davis and myself have been working on the Wind Energy Subcommittee in conjunction with a number of individuals throughout the county to move this initiative forward, and the good news today is it looks like BoM, the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, will go to auction, to auction off lease sites approximately 20 to 25 miles offshore of Morro Bay in the next six to 12 months, so this is, this is very exciting news for us, certainly there'll be more information to follow, but a number of folks in the county, as well as state and federal level, elected officials have been working to move this initiative forward, and I'm very grateful, this could mean something very great for not only the state of California with regard to new renewable green energy, but also for the city of Morro Bay in terms of tremendous potential opportunity for economic benefit. I'm sure you'll hear much more over the next few months with regard to this, and I'll be reporting back to you on that. Thanks, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Collins, sir, any announcements?
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, the only announcement we have is that the city, myself hired a new assistant city manager, Sarah Johnson Rios, from the city of Paso Robles, she'll be joining our team beginning the middle or late end of June. We converted the finance director position into the assistant city manager position, and I just want to say thank you again to the great work of Katie Lickdig, who's been our interim finance director and helped hold the fort down and deliver an excellent budget to city council, and reminder the community that we had our first budget hearing this afternoon at 3 o'clock, and we'll have another hearing tomorrow at 3 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, that is exciting news for you and your staff as well, and congratulations on that hire, look forward to, to meeting our new assistant city manager as well. That brings us to presentations this evening, we have two proclamations, and first I'll ask Dana, do we have anyone from the hunger awareness of Slow Food Bank?
Yes, Mayor, Garrett Wilson has joined us tonight.
Garrett, how are you, my friend?
I'm quite well, how are you?
I am well, long time no see.
It is wonderful to be back with my amazing friends in Morro Bay, albeit in a, in a different capacity, and with my former boss Katie Lickdig, who is a rock star, and I know she did great things for your community, so.
She certainly has, and we appreciate your volunteerism. Tonight, we have a proclamation, and I believe you were here live just about a year and a half or two years ago to receive this proclamation, but this, sir, is a proclamation of the city council of the city of Morro Bay declaring June 4th, 2021 to be Hunger Awareness Day, and I'm going to read it formally to you, it says, whereas the San Luis Obispo Food Bank is the leading hunger relief organization in the county, and whereas Slow Food Bank was founded in 1989 and has provided 32 years of hunger relief throughout the community, whereas the Slow Food Bank provides the backbone infrastructure for hunger relief and is the primary source of quality and affordable food for over 80 partner not-for-profit agencies that feed the hungry, and whereas the Slow Food Bank provides the backbone infrastructure for hunger relief and is, excuse me, is, it's a coalition of partners deliver nutritious food to those in need, to every community in the county from Napomo to San Miguel on the coast, from Los Sosos to San Simeon, and to points including Creston, Shandon, California Valley, and whereas the Slow Food Bank provides millions of pounds of only the most wholesome nutrition which advances and promotes important public health outcomes, and whereas the Slow Food Bank is coordinating a countywide promotion called Hunger Awareness Day on June 4th of this year, and whereas the Slow Food Bank believes that the people of our county will rally in a one-day push to donate funds needed to alleviate local hunger, and whereas people giving donations on June 4th, 2021 can raise the funds needed to help alleviate hunger. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor John Heding, and the city council of the city of Morro Bay declare June 4th, 2021 as Hunger Awareness Day in Morro Bay. Congratulations, what a great organization, amazing statistics in terms of the volumes of people that you have helped, and Garrett, tell us what's happening and how we can donate.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor and Council, for shining the light on this vital community issue, let me just give you a little bit of history, before the pandemic, a shocking one in six of our neighbors lived with the uneasy reality of food insecurity, that was before the pandemic, and in 2019, prior to the pandemic, the Slow Food Bank provided approximately 3.3 million pounds of food to hungry people in Slow County, accounting for approximately 2.8 million meals throughout Slow County, and in 2020, food insecurity in our county tragically soared to new heights, and I tell people, the face of hunger didn't simply change, it got deeper and very, very much so more familiar, I would be shocked if anybody on this city council meeting didn't have somebody in your pre-pandemic life that didn't experience food insecurity during the pandemic. Many of the people that I've run into just through the course of making my way through my community have reached out to me to let me know that they have required assistance for the first time in their lives, and that is a reality that this pandemic produced. In sense of the scale of our services, in the first six weeks of pandemic operations, when we literally threw our warehouse doors open and fed the community, we went through 73% of our six-month inventory in six weeks, and in 2020, we delivered 5.2 million pounds of food, or approximately 4.3 million nutritious meals, that's a 54% increase over 2019. And to bring it home to Morro Bay, as you mentioned, we do food distribution directly, we have two distributions in Morro Bay monthly, and we also provide support to nonprofits who are on the front line of hunger relief with us, and there are four amazing nonprofits in Morro Bay that we partner with to provide food relief to your citizens. And amazingly, during the pandemic, we started a third leg of distribution, providing home delivery service to isolated seniors in need, and we're really, really proud of the efficiency of our operations, we get audited on this number, so it's not just a marketing ploy, every dollar donated, we turn into seven nutritious meals, and the nutritious part is really important, we're not just filling bellies, we are fueling health, wellness, and development, which is really important, because about a third of those we serve are children under the age of 18, and about a quarter of those who we serve are seniors, both ends of life spectrum have really high nutritional needs, so June 4th is Hunger Awareness Day, our largest fundraising event of the year, about 72% of our operating budget comes from local donors like you, and in Morro Bay, you can visit us at the Albertsons on Quintana Road on June 4th, or at any time, like right now, or after this council meeting, you can go to SlowFoodBank.org, just click on Hunger Awareness Day and make a donation, we appreciate every level of giving, if you can afford a dollar, we're going to turn that dollar into seven meals, and I challenge people to figure out a restaurant they could go to with six of their friends and provide a nutritious meal to, but that's the power of this food bank, so thank you again for your kindness, we appreciate it, you are the lifeblood of our operations.
Garrett, thank you, amazing statistics, and again, donations will be taken at Albertson's and/or you can go online right now, we could take a break, and we could allow people to go online, but unfortunately I can't do that, but certainly this evening, SlowFoodBank.org, SlowFoodBank.org, make your donation, and we so appreciate all of the service that the organization is doing in making nutritious food available to those in need. Appreciate you being here, Garrett, good to see you as always.
Thank you so much, be well.
Thank you. Next up, we have my favorite school principal in the history of the world with us this evening, let's go ahead and promote Janet Gould up here. Is Janet with us tonight, Dana?
Yes, she is with us.
Thank goodness, there she is with that smiling face, hi Janet.
I am, good evening, thank you all so much.
Well, welcome, and we're glad you're here, we have a proclamation for you from the city council of Morro Bay, I'm going to go ahead and read it to you, this is a proclamation of the city council of the city of Morro Bay recognizing the outgoing principal of Delmar Elementary School Janet Gould for her years of service. Whereas Janet Gould has served as a classroom teacher and principal in the San Luis Coastal Unified School District for nearly 25 years, whereas Janet is recognized as a leader and one who inspires all members of the school staff and the entire student body, whereas Janet has the ability to communicate effectively with parents and the community to engage them in the learning environment, whereas Janet's leadership over the past 14 years at Delmar Elementary has built her an outstanding team of professional educators and has made Delmar Elementary a compassionate, welcoming, and safe place for children, and whereas during Janet's tenure as principal, Delmar Elementary was recognized in 2018 and 2020 as one of California's most exemplary and inspiring public schools by the California Distinguished Schools Program, and whereas Janet has a true passion for her career and is committed to her amazing staff, parents, and students, whereas the entire city of Morro Bay team will greatly miss Janet's leadership as principal at Delmar Elementary, and whereas we wish Janet great success in her new role in the district as executive director of Student Support Services. Now therefore be it resolved, the Morro Bay City Council does hereby recognize and thank Janet Gould for her years of service as principal at Delmar Elementary in the city of Morro Bay. Janet, I just want to tell you personally, thank you for your care, nurturing, and quality education to my grandchildren, both of which lived in Morro Bay and have gone through Delmar Elementary, and what a fantastic experience it was for them, but also their parents, and my wife Sue and I as grandparents being involved in your school, witnessing directly your leadership, your commitment, and your care for young children, and you will be sorely missed in the city of Morro Bay at Delmar, but we know you're moving on to, I don't know if it's greater things, but new and other things, and we want to just give you a moment to receive that and make a statement.
Well, thank you so much, this is just such truly an honor, and you know, I've been so fortunate to live in Morro Bay all 25 years that I've worked for the school district, and I love our town, and I love our community, and it's just been such a privilege to be able to interact with the community and bring the community into our school, and we are an amazing distinguished school, back-to-back 18-20, one of the very, very few, and throughout the state of California, but you know, we do focus on the whole child and, and building partnerships with parents and building partnerships with our community, the food bank, Delmar is one of the sites for the food bank, and you know, we've just been able to do wonderful things over the last 14 years that I've been there and before, and really, the way we've been able to navigate the pandemic for the last year, and support our families, and support students, and try and get them back to school as quickly as possible, and support them throughout distance learning, it's just, it's been a ride, it's been amazing, I have always felt the support from our community and from city council in so many different ways, there's so many times I've said, only in Morro Bay, with the most positive of meanings, and you know, have worked closely with our police department and our fire department, and just the city has been such an important part of our school, and we so appreciate that, and your kids' club program that you have through the city of Morro Bay is the absolute best, so it's just so fortunate to be able to have worked with them for so many years, but the way they've stepped up and you've supported that happening this past year with the pandemic has really helped us to help our students and help our families, so it's an amazing team, and we found someone great to step in my, in my shoes, Mike Wood will be taking over as principal July 1st, and I know he's going to do a great job, and I do just have the absolute best team at Delmar, so I know it will continue to go strong, and I'm excited to still be a part of the district and to still continue living in Morro Bay, so I will, I'm leaving, but I'm not.
Well, Janet, thanks so much for being here tonight, and best of luck to you in your new position, and we're blessed that you're going to still be with us as a resident here in Morro Bay, and just wish you the best of luck in your new position, thanks again for being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Indeed. Okay, that brings us to general public comment, this is public comment for items either on agenda for which you cannot stay, or items that are not on the agenda that you'd like to address regarding the city, again, general public comment, you can access public comment via Zoom, the information is being displayed on the screen, and/or you may call via telephone, the number again is on the screen, be sure if you access via Zoom to use the raise hand function in order for us to recognize you, and if you're calling in by phone, please press *9 to raise your hand, and you'll be recognized, you'll have three minutes, and again, this is general public comment for items either on the agenda for which you cannot stay, or items that are not on the agenda that you'd like to address. So Anthony, let's go ahead and open up public comments, sir, and do we have any calls?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, I see Jen Ford with her hand up.
Welcome, Jen.
Okay, Jen, you should be unmuted.
All right, can you hear me?
Welcome, Jen, yes.
Hi, thank you so much, Mayor Heding, and fellow city council members, I'm here this evening as a resident of Morro Bay to extend my gratitude to our outstanding Delmar Elementary School's principal Janet Gould. Ms. Gould's years of dedication to our youth through her love for education has gifted our children a welcoming place that has become a home away from home for a considerable part of their lives. I worked alongside her when my children were Delmar students and volunteered as very, for various PTA roles. Her genius brain, work ethic, fairness, and smile were something I have and will continue to admire. Great leaders elevate you in spirit while challenging you to do better. Working with her has helped me become a more efficient and forgiving leader. My children can also look back at their experience as students with fondness, and that's really what's important as a parent. I'm sad that our city is losing Janet Gould as our principal, but I am so excited for her to become a part of our school district's team of excellence, thank you so much.
Thank you, Jen, very much. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, I see Judy Neuhauser with her hand up. Okay, Judy, you should be unmuted.
Welcome, Judy.
Thank you, my name's Judy Neuhauser, I actually live in Los Sosos, I'm here tonight because I just received the San Luis Papers article about the bulldozing in Morro Creek by the energy company, and I wasn't aware that it was legal to bulldoze without a grading permit, and my understanding is there were no permits that were, that were extended. I'm horrified a little bit because of both the human cost, but also for the bird cost, it's the middle of bird nesting season, I'm the president of the Morro Coast Audubon, and seeing the amount of destruction, I believe it's in the flood plain, it looked like it was willows, which are riparian and water-dependent, so that seems like it is a wetlands, so I'd like to know what is happening and what will So I'd like to know what is happening and what will be the Morro Bay city's response to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I see Betty Windholtz with her hand up. Okay, Betty, you should be unmuted.
Welcome, Betty.
Thank you. This is Betty Windholtz. I would like to add my kudos to Ms. Gould. As a member of the United Methodist Children's Center Board, she's been very cooperative with us and the school in terms of getting children back and forth on the different programs after school and before school, and it's just been a real ease in doing that because of her willingness to be involved in the community and have the community involved with the school, and so the church could work with, the church children's center could work with him, and I appreciate that about her. I have one comment, or actually three questions. One has to do with opening up of the meetings. If the governor is indeed opening up the state of California in June, will we then be having public meetings back in the vets hall for all of our public meetings? And then my other two questions are budget-related. I know you've been having budget meetings in the middle of the day, and I can't attend those because of work, but these I don't think are related to the current budget, but I'm wondering where the funds came from to redo the parking lot out at the Rock for the second time, and I'm wondering where the funds came from for the vets hall. I know at one time we had sought funds because it was a food distribution center for the, for the people in need, but I don't know if that's where it came from or if there was another source. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Next public comment, Anthony?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council. Mr. Graham, could you perhaps answer the question regarding bulldozing in Morro Creek without permits or perhaps without permits?
Thank you, Mayor Heding. Yeah, so my understanding is Vistra Energy has been cleaning up the creek bed area of all of the debris from some of the homeless encampments that line the creek. They're not doing bulldozing or excavating in that area. I think all the equipment's been kept about 200 feet away from the edge of the creek bank, maybe 250. We did receive similar complaints. I received a complaint through the Coastal Commission's enforcement wing about this, and we made contact with Vistra, you know, sort of this afternoon, maybe a couple hours ago, and expressed our concern about what potentially was going on there and then gave them direction that I got from Coastal Commission about what they could and could not do out there, and they said that they were compliant. Now, I haven't had an opportunity to go out there yet, so I don't know exactly what's been done, although I have seen some pictures that were taken by our wonderful police department folks when they were out there, I think assisting Vistra, you know, earlier today. So that's what I know.
Okay, thank you, Scott. I appreciate that very much. And then regarding Betty's question about open meetings, Scott, did you want to come comment on that or Chris?
Yeah, I'll let the city attorney speak to the legalities of that, but we are reviewing both reopening of City Hall and the planning department. Other city facilities have been closed through the pandemic as well as discussing with AGP, you know, what our options are, if we were going to stay in a Zoom setting or some kind of hybrid situation. And the funds for the vets hall is partially through the PEG funds, which are, you know, assessments for public access for cable that we all pay through the cable fees and then some general, not general fund, but general impact fees funds that are for general purposes that we could use those funds for, you know, redevelopment of that or improvements made to that facility. As far as the harbor, I'm sorry, the rock lot is concerned, I believe the expenditure for putting in the parking improvements is in the $10,000 to $15,000 range, and I think that's coming out of harbor fund balance, but Katie or Eric might, well, Eric's not actually in the meeting today, sorry, he had to go on an emergency thing, but my belief is that's coming out of harbor fund, fund balance.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate that very much. Okay, that brings us to, sorry?
Did, Chris, you're on, did you, do you know how the, how the emergent, what the emergency, or at least the reopening, if you will, on June 15th, how that may play with the ability to have, continue to have video meetings moving forward?
Sure. So in terms of the law of the state of California, the governor suspended the requirements under the Brown Act that council meetings and all Brown Act body meetings need to be held at a public place, and that has been under suspension for over a year now due to the COVID-19 pandemic. It's unclear at this point what the governor will or won't do on June 15th or thereafter in regards to that suspension of that part of the Brown Act. I have been keeping a close eye on what the state of California is or is not going to do. I know the League of California Cities has already petitioned the governor to make sure that cities and public agencies across the state at a minimum have some grace period for the possible transition back to full public meetings to make sure that their facilities can accommodate the situation of, it appears we're pulling out of the pandemic, but there's still, of course, concerns. So in regards to the law, it's unclear whether the June 15th date is also going to include the governor basically suspending, revoking the entire state of emergency declaration. After June 15th, there will certainly still be a lot of statewide measures that the governor is going to be keeping in place pursuant to the COVID-19 pandemic. My understanding is the reopening is going to be pegged towards allowing lawfully, you know, folks to do more than they've been able to do in the last year, but it's not going to be, I think, a complete, we're out of the woods, you know, there are no more legal restrictions or opportunities for, you know, cities and communities to act in a way that they think is safe. As to the logistics of reopening the vets hall, under milder pandemic conditions, I can't speak to that, but I am continuing to keep my eye on what the governor's going to do, and also Sacramento is looking into possible legislation to allow cities that have actually felt that there's a benefit to doing online meetings to maybe pursue some sort of hybrid, and I think we'll just have to keep our eye on what comes out of Sacramento. So somewhat of a long reply, but hopefully that addresses some of the questions that are, I'm sure, being asked by folks in the community and have been asked. And of course, I can address any other questions council may have or staff.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate that, and more to follow on that with regard to when we might be back live. Thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda. This is a public comment. We'll be open now for our consent agenda. This is item A on our agenda this evening. Access information is on the screen. If you'd like to address any items on the consent agenda, public comment is now open. Anthony, do we have anybody in the queue for public comment?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I see Betty Windholtz with her hand up. Okay, Betty, you should be unmuted.
Welcome back, Betty.
Are you there?
Is that okay now?
Yes, we can.
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay. My comment is in relation, or actually, it's a question in relationship to A3. I see that Councilmember Barton is not one of the liaison people for the five committees, and rather, Councilmember Davis has two, and I'm just wondering why Ms. Barton is not being a liaison.
Anthony, other public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay, with that, I'll close public comment, bring it back. Anybody have any items they'd like to pull? If not, I'd rate, go ahead and entertain a motion for approval.
I'll motion approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Addis to approve the consent, second by Councilmember Davis. Any further discussion? Hearing that, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Great. That brings us to item B, B1 specifically. This is a continued item, continuation from our prior council meeting, the adoption of Resolution Number 20-21 for Plan Morro Bay, certifying the final environmental impact report and adopting findings of fact, a statement of overriding considerations, mitigation, monitoring, reporting program, and general plan local coastal program update. We've had two public hearings at our last two city council meetings on the issue. We've examined the general plan, local coastal plan in detail, heard a presentation on the environmental impact report, and I will go ahead and turn it over to, let's see, I guess, Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Mayor Heding. I have a brief PowerPoint presentation that I'm going to tee up here. Okay, well, as, as was stated by the mayor, this item has been heard by the city council on two separate occasions. That was on 4/27 and 5/11, and then was continued to this evening's meeting. The council completed review of the entirety of Plan Morro Bay, the general plan, local coastal program update, and at the last meeting, you received a presentation from RINCON Consultants on the final environmental impact report, the findings of fact, and the statements of overriding consideration. And as part of council's review at the last meeting, council did direct a few changes, and so I will go over at least, I'll go over those here in a second. Or maybe I won't. There we go. The first one was to revise implementation action LU 13 and 17 to remove the reference to the 25% allocation of waterfront hotel units as low-cost visitor-serving accommodations, and we've done that. There was request to add a reference to a Class IV separated bikeway to the circulation element, and we've done that. There was a request to revise implementation actions CIR-4 to add enhanced infrastructure financing districts as an example of a mechanism for funding future circulation improvements, and we've added that. There was a request to update the conservation element policy C-4.1 to delete an outdated reference to the year 2020 and to update that, and we've done that as well. There was a request by council to revise the conservation element implementation action C-7 to include reference to SB 1383, and we've done that. There was also a request to update the open space element, specifically page 4-85, to reflect recent actions with the Morro Bay Open Space Alliance and their payment of funds to the city for consideration, recording a conservation easement over Serrito Peak. That conservation easement was reported on April, in April of 2021, and we've updated that section to reflect this. There was a request, well, we also revised the letter from RINCON, EIR revision letter, that referenced the 3,300 panorama lots and the land use change, specifically to identify the correct square footage or acreage for that site at 10.6. That's been corrected, and to identify the correct land use designation for that property at moderate density residential, and we've done that. That was the last one. We did, oh, and I'll briefly speak to this. We did receive a letter from Save the Park that had concerns about a few things, and then we received several correspondence that seemed to be based off the concern raised in the Save the Park letter from Lyndon Merrill and the Audubon Society. The first one, the first issue that was sort of raised in that letter was that the concern about the city reducing buffers in the new, in the updated general plan. We're not reducing buffers. That's documented from Save the Park, referenced a policy 11.06 that refers to 100-foot buffers, but sort of failed to reference a policy a little further down in the current general plan where buffers lower, or lesser buffers can be applied to projects, and specifically policy 11.14 allows for 100-foot buffers in ESHA areas in rural, in the rural portions of the city, and then 50-foot buffers in the urban areas that can be reduced further down to 25 if a project can't be, you know, developed in the, at the 50-foot buffer. These same allowances are provided in the draft plan, so these policies essentially mirror one another. There was concern that we've added a policy that addresses takings. We have an issue in the current general plan. You can't get a variance from a general plan policy. You can only get a variance from a zoning code policy, and the current general plan only gets you to a buffer in an ESHA area, environmentally sensitive habitat, of 25 feet. We have some properties in town that can't be developed in a, you know, with that 25-foot buffer applied, but we work closely with the Coastal Commission on the language for this policy. They actually gave the language to us because they thought it was an issue and a deficiency in our current general plan, local coastal program, so they were on board with assisting us and preparing appropriate documentation to address the takings issue, and that would be where you would remove all economic use of a property, a reasonable economic use of a property based on the application of the, say, the 25-foot buffer as an example. And I would note that there was some concern that staff's able to do this, you know, based on the language of the policy, but staff can't approve reduction in buffers. That can only be done at the planning commission level. Any project that's adjacent to ESHA that has to perform ESHA studies and that type of thing is required to obtain planning commission approval, and that's sort of found in our ESHA overlays, which will be, which will not, does not live in the Plan Morro Bay document, but instead is, will be found in the draft zoning code and implementation plan, which will be coming forward in the next couple of months to planning commission and city council. There was also some concern that we were reducing protection of biological resources. I think there's some confusion in the letter actually between protection policies that are, that are in the general plan versus mitigation measures that are in the EIR. But you know, my, you know, my feel on this is I think we've improved this section dramatically. It's much more clear in the current general plan, very specific. We haven't reduced any protections for biological resources, whether that be, you know, vegetation related or, or, you know, for birds or other animals. I think we've sort of improved those areas in the document really, and certainly, you know, as public comments coming forward and as the council has the opportunity to ask questions, I'm happy to do a little bit deeper dive, and I do also have, you know, on the meeting this evening, I have Chris Burzbach with RINCON Consulting prepared the AR, and then I have Amy Sinseimer as well with Placeworks, who prepared majority of Plan Morro Bay. With that, the recommendation this evening is for council adoption of Resolution 20-21, which would certify the final environmental impact report with findings of fact and statements of overriding consideration, mitigation and monitoring reporting program, and adopt Plan Morro Bay, which is the city's updated general plan and local coastal program. Staff also recommends council direct staff to submit the LCP amendments to the Coastal Commission for certification. With that, I'll stop sharing my screen, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Scott, and thank you for proactively addressing the concerns that were raised and presenting those this evening. I very much appreciate you doing that in advance. Again, council, this is a continuation, and so I will open it up for council questions at this time. Then I will reopen one more time public comment after that. After public comment is received, I'll close public comment, close the public hearing, and then bring it back to council for a motion for further discussion. So let's go ahead and see if there are any questions. Councilmember Addis, do you have any questions?
I do not have additional questions. Thank you.
You're certainly welcome. Thank you. Councilmember Barton, any questions?
I'm, I'm glad to see that a number of them have been addressed, and so I was just rereading the, the chamber comments, and I, I was looking at one having to do with internet in the area and the city response. and the city response of having had discussions with Digital West. I'm just wondering, has that gone any farther? Is there, you know, anything to report there?
I'm not sure. We are working with Digital West to provide fiber to city buildings. I'm not exactly sure the status of that project. I'm not sure if there's anyone else here that does know where we're at with at least, you know, that piece of it. I don't know that we're providing it publicly, though.
Chief Knuckles?
Oh, hey, thanks, Scott. So, yeah, it's only for the city infrastructure, the servers that we have within City Hall and also with our phone system. It's gonna help us provide to move all the infrastructure of communications into the firehouse that has nine days backup power through its propane generator that we do have. But the opportunity that we're having right now at this time, that no internet service we provided off that installation at this time. Oh, and the expiration date. So we're looking at, they should be done with the work within the week. And then our IT department will be planning to move all the infrastructure into the fire station.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Any further questions, councilmember? Barton?
Not at this moment.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Davis, sir, any questions?
No, Mr. Mayor, I have no questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Heller, sir, questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, Scott Graham, thank you so much for responding quickly to comments from the public and clarifying things that are, can be fairly complex. And I appreciate you doing that on short notice. The remaining question I have has to do with the concerns of the shoreline protective devices that the master leaseholders at the Embarcadero have raised. What are your thoughts about how to resolve that issue and address their concerns?
Absolutely, Councilmember Heller. So the issues they raise are, they find the document to be unclear, specifically in the safety elements as it relates to reventment policies in that section of the document. But that safety element in the sort of public safety element policies, 3.1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, I think were the references to ones. They don't apply to the Embarcadero. Those apply to sort of the beach area in town. And they actually apply to areas in the bay but south of the improved Embarcadero, where we might have bluffs and those types of things. Specifically, the land use elements is where we have most of the policies that apply to development along the waterfront. And specifically, we have a reference and acknowledgement that we have improvements in that area that involve revetments, bulkheads, concrete walls, sheet piles, you name it, it's there, riprap. We have all of those things. And even the introductory sections in the land use element under, I think, GOAL 8 or LU 8.13 discuss the ability to maintain and protect those and require us to do that. In fact, even the policies related to sea level rise say that we need to monitor these things and then improve those facilities as we need to based on sea level rise analysis. And then we'll have another requirement to do a, you know, a study and report on, you know, specific triggers related to sea level rise. But it is specifically allowed and in the document. And we work with Coastal closely to differentiate the two, meaning to put the revetment and bluff protection policies and stuff that apply generally to make sure that only applied to those areas outside of the waterfront, that we could maintain those areas. And much of the language that we have in the document currently was derived from the Coastal Commission. And specifically, they suggested that we break it up in the manner in which we did. That was their recommendation. So they, we've had numerous conversations with them. They're comfortable that the policies that allow, you know, protection, repair, maintenance of the seawalls are in place and work just fine and won't be an issue. There was one other concern, I think, raised by that group. And that had to do with a requirement to redo the coastal development permits every 20 years. I know they had a concern related to that as related to, you know, the economics of redeveloping the sites. You know, that is largely, that policy is largely applicable to areas where there's beach and where you would maybe put a seawall or evetments outside of the waterfront. It could apply to some of the areas in the waterfront. But most of those, you know, locations, that 20-year requirement and the need to report on those has to do with the mitigation that goes along with them. And really what it's talking about is like when shoreline protective devices are required to mitigate impacts for like sand supply, access and recreation and those types of things. Most of our waterfront development, you know, that wouldn't be an issue for those. They're already required to have those components built into their projects. So I don't know that it's that much of an issue. And even if we struck it from the document, you know, that is a standard requirement from the Coastal Commission related to like new seawalls on, I think, bluffs and like Pismo Beach or something like that. And they would put it on the project anyway. I think it's probably good to keep it in our document because it allows folks to see if they read our document, to know that potentially could be a requirement. And they could ask us about it and/or they could inquire with Coastal Commission about whether it would be applicable to whatever their project might be to fill under that category.
Okay, I mean, I understand what you're saying. But I don't know, is there some way to simplify it, make it clearer to satisfy the folks who are investing money in those properties?
So the concern they raise, those policies don't apply to them. I, I mean, I don't.
So is there some way you can clarify that in the document? Because in reading it, it looks to me like maybe they do. Or you just think they misunderstand the document?
I think to some extent, I mean, I would imagine, I suppose there are some things we could do. We've gone back and forth with Coastal on this specific issue. And this is where we came out on it. You know, this was really, much of it was directed by them to make sure that we were separating them out adequately. So I don't know, I mean, I suppose we could. We'd have to go back and talk with Coastal about it because we got very specific direction about this. In fact, they came up with much of the language that's used here as well. Because these are core Coastal Act issues, values, those types of things. So this would, I'm not sure what we'd be able to do. I mean, we'd have to continue the item again and I guess move forward. Or you could give me general direction to see if we could clarify it. But I'd be uncomfortable, really, with the city council not having the change in language in front of you and saying it's okay to move forward.
Sure, okay. Thank you for answering those questions. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, muted. Thanks, Councilmember Heller. Appreciate that very much. And I had no further questions, Scott. Thank you. With that, I'll go ahead and open up public comment. This is item B1, public comment for item B1. We have the information on the screen, how to access that. So public comment is now open. And Anthony, do we have anybody in the queue, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I see Judy Newhauser with her hand up. I'm gonna go ahead and unmute her. Okay, Judy, you are unmuted.
Welcome, Judy.
Thank you. This is Judy Newhauser, president of Morro Coast Audubon Society. I wrote a letter, but in addition, in light of the events of the last couple of days of the types of activities that were going on in the willow scrub habitat, I'd like to point out that what your new plan says is that the ESHA, the environmentally sensitive habitat areas, include willow, I'm quoting now, include willow, woodland, and scrub environments. And it seems to me that this is a truly sensitive habitat that they were working in. I don't know if any of you have actually seen the work or seen the photos that came out in the Tribune, but it was certainly a large machine that went through the area and took out large numbers of willow scrub habitat. And it's bird nesting season. I'm concerned that if this is being dismissed as simply maintenance, it's fine, then how does this land use element protect environmentally sensitive habitats? That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I see Betty Windholtz with her hand up.
Welcome, Betty.
Thank you. First, let me acknowledge my question from the last item saying that Ms. Barton was not part of a liaison, but that she is liaison to Park and Rec. And somehow I misread that. So I just want to acknowledge that she does have a position in that group. In relationship to this item, the place I was quoting where it says that staff will have jurisdiction over a piece of property without the consent of the planning commission is in policy C-1.6B, where it says the buffer may be reduced per determination of city staff for sites on which the linear distance is not met, but the proposed project is separated by ESHA topography. So I just wanted to give you that citation for where I got that from and that it is in the new policy. The other thing I wanted to note was the definition of urban and rural. If you're saying that the other current policy applies, that it distinguishes between those two kinds of land in Morro Bay, you know, most of the edge of Morro Bay is considered rural. Are we considering anything around ESHAs within, like, neighborhoods as urban? So let me clarify, my question is, I have problems with knowing what's rural, what's urban, who gets to define those two terms if they're going to be in this policy? Because that's not how I read the 11.06. And if 11.0 is in conflict with another policy in the old document, in the current document, then that clarifying is happening in this document, which to me seems to be reducing some of our protections. And so that's my interpretation and why I made that comment and why Save the Park is concerned. And Save the Park absolutely backs up Audubon in terms of their concerns on how we're treating ESHA. Certainly what was happening in the Tribune, certainly what happens by saying that breeding seasons are eligible for being encroached on in new development in this new general plan. Those are concerns to Save the Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay, I will go ahead and, put my camera on, close public comment and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion and/or motion. But first, Mr. Graham, could you address the issue raised by Ms. Newhauser regarding the ESHA willow, woodland, and scrub environment?
So we do have protective policies in the draft general plan that protect those ESHA areas. Areas like that are considered ESHA. And you wouldn't be able to go, say, into them and, you know, remove vegetation and those types of things. As it relates to, you know, what's happened over there, again, I haven't gone over there and seen it yet, so I can't really speak to it. All I can, all I can speak to is I've seen pictures of it and I've spoken with the individuals that were doing the work. And they said they were staying, they were outside of the initial creek area and literally probably from the creek bank, at least 200, 250 feet away from there. You know, what's in those locations is hard for me to tell. They were driving machinery, small machinery in that area. And hopefully, we'll get a chance to go out there and take a look at it tomorrow. But there wasn't that opportunity today. So I can't really speak much beyond that. But again, our policies address what you can and cannot do in ESHA, as do the current city's general plan local coastal program. Very similar.
Thanks. And then Ms. Windholtz's question regarding urban versus rural, specifically Section 1106, she cited. What's rural versus what's urban?
I'm gonna ask if Amy, you know, was looking this up. I don't recall whether that urban and rural is in the current one or not.
Mayor and council, Amy Sinseimer with Placeworks. I don't believe it is, but I can look it up right now.
Okay, I was trying to do it, too. I didn't recall it being in there.
We'll give you a minute, Amy.
Yeah, I don't, it's not in the, it's not in the new document. I don't see it. Do you, Amy?
Thinking a look to double check, but I definitely don't remember that being in the policies. Yeah, I only see rural coming up in the air quality section, the conservation element.
That's what I saw as well. And I think that sort of makes sense. We're an urbanized city. So I think they just left the, they lost the rural connotation and just, you know, applied the regular buffer language. Again, this is language that was provided to us or largely edited by the Coastal Commission.
Okay. Very good. Thanks for that. I appreciate it. I'll bring it back to council and either entertain a motion or further discussion.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments, if I might, Mayor.
Go ahead.
First of all, this is a tremendous effort to get us to this point. The planning commission, years of input by the community. And it's a tremendous document. And I want to thank you, Scott Graham and Amy and your firm for all the work that you've put in. Every staff member in some way has contributed to this, to this effort. And I think it's really a prodigious document, an important document, looking to the future. I must say, however, I'm troubled by the two remaining issues that we've discussed tonight, primarily because there seems to be some confusion still about the ESHA boundaries. And I share the concerns of the public comment that's been made. And there's still some issues with respect to the businesses on the Embarcadero. And I'm not quite comfortable with them. I would need to do more research and look at the language more closely to get comfortable with it. And I hate to say, I would love to approve this tonight, but I just can't do it until those issues are a little more clear to me. So I just wanted to make that comment. But I also want to thank you, Mr. Graham, Mr. Collins, everybody's worked so hard for so many years to get us to this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other comments?
I wanted to thank Scott for, I was going back through the comments that the chamber had made. And I came on the one having to do with increasing the heights in the downtown area height and density, and that that got addressed. So I wanted to say thank you to Scott for making that happen.
Thank you. Other comments? Hearing that, I'll just make the comment. Thank you, Councilmember Heller. I take a contrary position to that. I think, well, I know that not only have we been through years of processing with this document, but we've also provided significant opportunity, including all of the hearings and vetting by the planning commission, that is really the, I consider to be the expert group in this, and significant consultation with the Coastal Commission with regard to acceptable language. Concerning the issue on businesses on the Embarcadero, I understand the concern. However, my sense is that if you alter the document, if it ends up at Coastal, it's gonna be a requirement anyway because this is required language. And I think the explanation is fairly clear that the concern on the part of the leaseholders is an amortization issue with regard to getting loans. But it doesn't appear to me, given the information that Mr. Graham has provided, that that will be an issue. And I, you know, I'm just feeling that we've vetted this, heard comment, met with the individuals, and I'm comfortable with the language. With regard to the ESHA boundary information, I think the explanation tonight was well-vetted and answered the questions that were provided in detail. And I'm comfortable personally with that explanation by Mr. Graham. I'll echo what a couple of you said. I am so grateful to our staff for the years of work on this document. It's something that will live on for 20 years. So motion by Mayor Heding for the staff recommendation. And I, was there a tie going to a runner out there that I missed? Was it Councilmember Addis?
The tie goes to Councilmember Davis, I think.
Councilmember Davis, seconded by Councilmember Davis. Any further discussion?
I'll just, I'll just comment and thank Scott Graham as well. I think almost his entire career in Morro Bay has been spent working on the, on this update. And I hope that that's really frees him up for some big things coming next. I'm excited about that. And I do want to thank the public for engaging. And it's just been tremendous, the amount of community engagement across numerous meetings, the G-PAC, Public Comment, the Chamber, the Waterfront Group. So many groups have come together. But I also want to voice that it's, I see this plan as a beginning, not an end. And I see it as a way for us to move forward, but I don't think it means we're not going to continue to hear, vet and respond to concerns from folks from across our community. I think our staff has shown that they're adept at doing that. And I think our council as well has shown a high level of interest in supporting our community. And so I don't see the general plan as closing the door on anyone. I see it as stepping into the future together with a unifying vision and a way for us to move forward. And I'm excited to do that and to still be able to listen to issues that folks bring forward.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Addis. Very well stated and I appreciate that very much. Any further comments? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries forward.
Thank you for that. And Mr. Graham, this is organic juice. I'm raising it, I don't know if you can see it, but I'm raising it to you. Thank you and everybody for all of your work. Appreciate that. That ends item B1, and that takes us to item, first business item, C1. This is a review of the WRF quarterly update report and to provide direction and input as deemed appropriate. And I will turn it over to, I believe, Kyle, if Kyle's here. Yes, Kyle, welcome.
Hi, Mayor. How are you?
Doing well, thank you.
Mayor Heding and members of City Council, I'm Kyle Rohr from Corolla Engineers. Nice to see you, nice to see you, Morro Bay, even though it's virtual. It's nice to be with you again. I have a short slide presentation that describes the third quarter 2021 Wharf program summary. And unless, unless Scott has anything to say, I'll just jump to his share screen. Is that all right?
Yes, sir.
All right. My nephews aren't in the room to help me with technology, so hopefully this works. Can you all see what I have?
Not yet.
How about now?
There you go.
Small, small successes. So again, here's the third quarter activity overview. You have the full report, your council packet. I'll, I only have a few slides here, and we can get right to questions and answers. So the recommendation is obviously just for you to receive this report and provide input as you see fit. So I could, I should start by saying that quarter three was rather unremarkable as things go. The budget remained unchanged. We have, we're at 138,591, which is unchanged from the last quarter report. That was the 125.9 number is from fiscal 1718, as we recall. The project also remains on schedule. The time schedule or compliance deadline is the end of February of 2023. We're still on line to reach substantial completion by early June of 2022. So as I mentioned, the Q3 budget reconciliation is the same as Q2. The only change we have is within project components, if you will, and it's actually a credit on the water reclamation facility. Their Fifth Amendment resulted in a 200, roughly $200,000 credit, which we then transferred to the contingency bucket. So overall, we're the same as we were during Q2. Just snapshot of the expenditures to date, we, Q3 saw a little over $7 million in actual expenditures. Bringing the total expenditures to date as of Q3 to about $45.7 million against the 138.5 total project costs. Again, this, this information is broken down in various ways in the, in the report itself. One thing I will like to point out that is different in this report than prior ones that council has seen, Corolla worked really closely with the city's accounting gurus. A shout out to Sandy Martin and Doug Harbottle. They really gave us a lot of help in an exercise that I'm going to describe to you on this slide. We've historically had a challenge comparing Corolla's program management, budget tracking and expenditures from quarter to quarter with the actual city budget accounts. I, I found this crosswalk confusing and a member or two of the C-PAC felt the same way. And so we spent quite a bit of time actually working with Sandy and Doug to, for lack of better words, build a crosswalk that connected the city budget information with what we're presenting to you quarterly for the Wharf. What we ended up doing, I'll spare you the CPA or accounting course for the day, but what essentially we did was took a look at all the city budget codes related to Wharf and make sure that things were being bucketed and allocated properly and in a way that allowed us to crosswalk to the project components themselves. I can talk more about this if you're interested, but we're really happy to be able to take a look at the city budget actuals allocated to vendors and allocated project components. So that's something over Q3. So we continue to be behind in terms of the expended, the current expenditures versus planned expenditures. For the most part, the shortfall of spending is to do with the, the slow, at least the last quarter, is due to the slow start we have from our conveyance contractor. I will say that Q4 and all of, all of the next fiscal year are going to be very, very busy and we're going to be catching up on plan versus, versus actual expenditures on a cash flow basis in the next quarters pretty quickly. The milestone schedule has not changed with the exception of the conveyance facilities. The substantial completion and financial completion have both been pushed out by a month to, month to six weeks, I guess, due to the stop work order that we had to provide the conveyance contractor because of the ship out issue. Other than that, everything else is on schedule. And as I mentioned before, we're still looking just fine to meet the regional board time schedule order requirements. So I have a couple of slides that look ahead to Q4. Again, the purpose of this presentation was, the general purpose was to share the Q3 report with you. But I shared with C-PAC and I'd like to share with the group that we want to look ahead to Q4 because Corolla worked closely with the city to help come up with the fiscal 2122 budget placeholders, for lack of, for lack of better words. We, we felt that instead of, we felt that we needed to put a considerable amount of thought into the 2122 budget and not just, you know, throw an estimated number in it. So what we did, what Corolla did, was a complete bottom-up approach to the budget for the next fiscal year. So this includes the construction spend among the three elements. So again, the treatment plant, the conveyance and the injection wells. We wanted to get our arms around what we really believed was going to be spent. On top of that, we deconstructed all the program management costs. And that's not just Corolla's program management contract and all our subcontractors, but also the programs, the program management supporting contractors that contract directly with the city. So we did a very thorough bottom-up approach to come up with the new number. And I have a breakdown of how we got here on the next slide, but I just, this just wants, I just wanted to point out the effort that we spent to come up with a new number that, you know, unfortunately is higher than the, than last quarter's budget reconciliation by the tune of about $6.2 million, with the new budget being 144.7. So where that comes from, in general, that comes from anticipated amendments, anticipated and current amendments that are likely for the Wharf facility for change orders. There's also going to be additional archaeological costs due to the sensitive areas that the conveyance is going through. Archaeological costs that exceeded our best estimates in prior quarters, which is also associated with potentially higher construction contingencies for that, for the conveyance, as well as the water reclamation facility itself because of the soil slip issue, the landslide issue that we've talked about. There's also additional resources necessary working for increased management. Program management fees for Corolla projects, so Corolla team and all its subcontractors include, and as well as the city program management subcontractors, primarily due to an increase in scope and an acceleration of the conveyance construction. There's also some additional funding considerations for the recycled water facilities. So that's a high level, relatively high level breakdown of what is involved in the Q4 $6.2 million increase over, over Q3. Again, just as a heads up for what you're going to see from, from us next quarter. This presentation was made to C-PAC by myself on the 8th of May. We got good questions out of C-PAC, and not surprisingly, there was general concern about the budget increase that I just described and the nature of the cost drivers. Absolutely understandable that there would be concern about that, and that was discussed. There was also a good discussion regarding the contingency characterization. So the contingency bucket is going to be somewhere around $6.5 million. And there was discussion on whether is that truly contingency or is that a, an allowance, which is a good discussion. And in many cases, it's an allowance because these things we know we're going to have to address. We had additional questions regarding the permitting status and the risks associated with a couple of the key permits from the Department of Drinking Water, as well as California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Questions were provided in advance by Bart Beckman of C-PAC, as well as a Morro Bay resident. And we responded to those questions in writing and submitted them to the city. And lastly, there was a request to replace a estimated completion, a completion table that used to be part of the quarterly report. And we will, we will bring that back in, probably in a, in a different format, but we'll bring that back in the quarterly report. So that is my summary, and I'm happy to entertain clarifications and questions. I'll get out of sharing my screen so I can look at the report itself and let me know the page numbers that you're looking at.
Thank you, Kyle. This is the WRF update report, and we're looking for any questions you may have now regarding this. So let me go ahead and start with Councilmember Barton. Any questions?
I'm sitting here digesting that new cost figure. It's quite a jump.
It is. It is. And, you know, I could put that slide back up, but again, the lion's share, the lion's share has to do with expensive PCOs and expensive risks, risks that have come true, is the best way I can put it. You know, the additional construction contingency represents $3.5 million of the 6.2. I would point out, and I'm absolutely, I'm in complete agreement that this is a big increase. I absolutely agree. I will point out, though, that the construction contingency with this additional $3.4 million will climb to just shy of $7 million. And I think that Corolla and the program, the other program management team members, as well as the contractors, were very thorough and perhaps a little bit conservative, making sure that we're not going to have a sticker shock like this next fiscal year. And it's my hope, and quite frankly, my expectation, that this will be more than adequate to get us through, assuredly, the next fiscal year and get us through addressing these contingencies and clauses.
Councilmember Addis, some questions or comments?
Yes, I, I just received an email, but the kind of, you know, similar concerns. Just wondering about concrete steps to make sure that we, you know, don't increase costs anymore that they have, that we really, that we really do everything we can to, you know, be conservative with any increases.
Councilmember Addis, I received your questions and I, I did provide written responses to, to the city and.
And I did receive those. Thank you. I did receive those.
Okay, you're welcome.
Yeah, just so the public knows that, that I have been asking about that and that I share the same concerns as Councilmember Barton. And so if you wouldn't mind just sharing your response as well.
Sharing my responses to.
Your, the response you shared with me via email, if you don't mind just sharing that.
Via email or would you like it here verbally?
Yeah, that's what I mean. I'm sorry, if you don't mind sharing what you said via email to the group now.
Will do.
Make it public.
Yes, Scott, can you handle that? No?
Or verbally is fine. I'm just saying, so the public has the same information that I have when I ask that question.
Why don't I, I mean, I can go through them if, if the council.
Yes, I, um, I just received an email, but, uh, but a kind of, you know, similar concerns. Just wondering about concrete, uh, steps to make sure that we, you know, don't increase costs anymore that they have, that we really, um, that we really do everything we can to, you know, be conservative with any increases.
Councilmember Addis, I, I received your questions, and I, uh, I did provide written responses to, to the city and, and they are-
And I did receive those. Uh, thank you. I did receive those.
Okay, you're welcome.
Yeah, just so the public knows that, um, that I have been asking about that and that I share the same concerns as Councilmember Barton. And so if you wouldn't mind just sharing your response as well.
Um, sharing my responses to-
Uh, your, the response you shared with me via email, if you don't mind just sharing that.
Via email or would you like it here verbally?
Yeah, that's what I mean. I'm sorry. If you don't mind sharing what you said via email to the group now.
Will do.
Make it public.
Yes, Scott, can you handle that? No?
Or verbally is fine.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, so the public has the same information that I have when I ask that question.
Why don't I, I mean, I can go through them if, if, if the council would like.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's what Councilmember Addis was asking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought she was asking for an email transcript. Okay.
No, just go ahead and read off the responses.
Okay. So first of all, uh, Councilmember Addis gave us a compliment on safety and, uh, uh, there's room zero report-
I'm, I'm sorry. I guess I'm not being clear. I'll start again. Really, the biggest, uh, one I think is most important is the question on cost, you know, how we're going to keep those costs in mind. I think that's the most important piece here.
Yeah, absolutely. So you, you had, you had some good questions about cost, uh, you know, the cost over, to be asked about the cost overruns with respect to COVID. In this particular increase, there's no, there's no cost increases related. There is an outstanding PCO that does relate to increased costs because of COVID that's under negotiation right now. Um, and we should know about that, that shortly. Um, you know, I'll just, I'll just read what I sent you, um, about what adjustments to get, um, get us back in budget. So efforts are continually underway to mitigate the cost overruns today. Excuse me. The WRF treatment plant design build contract contains cost-saving incentives, and the contractor and city have been working closely to find ways to mitigate the cost impacts of current and anticipated change orders. So there is a, there's a contract mechanism for the treatment plant to share savings, and, uh, we're working to make sure that that is realized. So at the end of the day, maybe we get a benefit on the backend. And at the same time, I will compliment the, the design build team building that plant. Their relationship with the city program management team has been hyper collaborative, and we've done, I think, a very fair, on the same page job about trying to get these costs accurate and down. And that continues to be the case, which, which, uh, which is what my comment about my hope that we have enough contingency right now to get us through these issues is pretty supportable, I think, at this point. Um, then I also said, in addition, the program management team has developed alternative design construction approaches that may be able to reduce the magnitude of the necessary archaeological investigations related to the conveyance system, which would also likely reduce construction costs. And I just realized that I make my sentences way too long, but what I'm saying there is that, um, Corolla is working with the conveyance designer, as well as the archaeologist, to see if we can find a better way to deal with that most sensitive area of the conveyance. And that sensitive area of the conveyance is not only drawing $700,000 bogey on that amendment, on that projected increase I showed you, but it will also impact the cost, likely impact the cost of construction and may even impact time of construction, which will be another change order. So we've done a bunch of work to try to find, quite simply, a different routing to keep us from having to deal with that. And they're also, it also saves a whole bunch of other problems in terms of, um, you know, public outreach and things like that. So that's what we're trying to do. You also asked, uh, Councilmember Addis, you also asked, how will, how will we avoid, avoid running out of contingency? I've, I've said it a couple of times that I, I'm pretty comfortable with where we are in that contingency in light of, uh, where we are with the program on the conveyance and, uh, the treatment plant. I hope that we're out of big harms way. Um, but I, I'd be irresponsible by not saying, and if something does come up, we're just going to, we'd have to look at increasing the contingency again. I think it's at, I think it's at a robust amount in light of what's left to spend on construction. Um, but, you know, I've learned on this program, never, you know, never to be surprised. This is a very, very complicated program. So we'll just do the best we can. We, we, we know that city resources are, are limited and that, you know, I know that we owe it to the ratepayers to do the very best we can.
Well, I appreciate your candor, and I appreciate you closing with the idea that we owe it to the ratepayers. And I'm, I'm glad to see that all of this is contained within the current rates. I think that's critical moving forward, and, um, I'm glad to, you know, to hear that you feel like the contingency is enough, but you sound very realistic about this project, and I appreciate, I appreciate that perspective. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Appreciate your, uh, pointed questions. Um, Councilmember Davis, sir?
I have no questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Heller?
Uh, yes. Kyle, thank you for your report. I appreciate its brevity. I think we're at the stage of this program, and you'll agree, it's pretty much all about cost at this point and getting it done. And I appreciate your frankness in discussing where we are and your thoughts are about, uh, getting, getting this done, uh, without increasing rates. Um, it, it does concern me, obviously, that we started at 126 million is our original budget, uh, with a guaranteed maximum price supposedly on the water reclamation facility piece of it. And by the end of Q four, we'll be at almost $145 million, um, a 15% increase. Can you explain a little bit to me and to the public in general how we got from 126 million to the 145?
Well, I, I can explain at a very high level, and I, um-
Right.
And I will also point out, though, that at, um, a very detailed level, uh, the roadmap from there to here is, it's spelled out in the quarterly reports. Um, but I will, I will answer your question, uh, Councilmember Heller, is that I, in general, uh, there's a couple of categories. Um, delays, um, related to environmental, related to the frogs, uh, the treatment plant, um, between, just, just from that delay on the treatment plant alone, that's probably cost of $3 million. There's been, there's been, um, additional change orders, let's just focus on the treatment plant for the time being. There's been additional change orders related to the construction of that treatment plant brought about by, um, mutually agreed to improvements to the treatment plant from an operability standpoint. There has been a number of change orders that have come about to make, quite simply, to make that plant more reliable to operate and easier to operate. So that's another bucket. Um, we have also had a big, big part of that increase, uh, has to do with the difference between, uh, the original engineer's estimate for the conveyance and then the actual contracted amount for the conveyance. The contracted amount of the conveyance was, um, I want to say it's $37 million and change. I have too many numbers in my head. But there is a, there was another, and I'm looking at my notes because there was a, uh, there was a, I know, one of, a, uh, a question from, from the public about this very thing. So the conveyance bid was $7 million over the, over the engineering estimate, but a large increase prior to that $7 million increase had to do with the constantly increasing engineer's estimate of the conveyance itself as the design was advanced. And I guess the last bucket that I can put it in, that I can put into is that this project, um, from an archaeological perspective, um, and the mitigation involved with the sensitivity of the areas, especially the conveyance, um, they're very hard to predict. And in order to, in order to, we, we, in order to be compliant with permits, in order to be, you know, a good steward, um, we constantly have to reassess what needs to be done to protect the archaeological resources. And I think those are the, those are the four main that have taken us from point A to point B.
Okay. And, and just to clarify for the public, when you say archaeological, you're referring to Native American, uh, resources that are, uh, encountered during construction activities, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just want to make sure everybody understands that. The other question I had was about the soil slip, you know, that came up recently on the WRF, and I think council approved a $280,000 change order to deal with that issue. Do you have any thoughts about how much more that remedying that completely is going to cost and when we'll know those numbers?
Um, I can answer the second question. You didn't do the first one. And just for the benefit of the public, there was a second, there was a second soil slip, and whether it was part of the, whether it was part of the initial, uh, the initial disturbance or not, I am certainly not a geologist. Um, I can't pronounce most of the words that they're thrown around in fixing this thing. Um, but be that as it may, the, currently, and this goes back to a comment I made about how well the Phelan's Black and Beach team is building the plant, is working with the city's program manager and our construction manager, Steve Bimiaaga. We have a really good working relationship there. When we had the second soil slip, we mobilized, uh, multiple geological experts to come up with a shared understanding, instead of a whose fault is it, a more of a shared understanding of what happened and how are we going to fix it. We are currently at the point where we know what happened, and right now, the contractor, the Phelan's Black and Beach team, is preparing a cost estimate based on the agreed-to mitigation solution. Um, I, uh, I am not, it would be irresponsible for me to give you a range of what it's going to cost to mitigate it, but it's reflected in the, uh, in the contingency, um, in the contingency addition that I provided, uh, in that slide where we have a placeholder. We have $300,000 for additional investigation and mitigation design. I don't, quite frankly, I don't think that's going to be necessary because when we put this thing together, we pretty much understand, they were at an understanding of what needs to be done. We have a placeholder for $1 million for the soil slip mitigation. Um, I can, I think that number is generous, but I don't know what it's going to be. And it should be, I'm hoping by the time the quarter four report comes out, we have that number to share with you.
Okay. That, that would be my hope as well. Thank you for answering that question. If we can know that actual number by the end of Q four, that would be, that would be great. Um, with respect to financing, I know we've been pursuing SRF financing and, uh, others on the team might want to chime in on this, and I, I guess we have a written commitment, but we don't actually have access to the money or, or a locked-in rate yet. Uh, I think we're going to need that money, but correct me if I'm wrong, by, by the end of the summer or so. Is that a fair statement? And if we don't have access to that money by the end of the summer, what are, what are the city's options?
I'd, I'd rather not speak to the cash flow. I think there's people on the, on this meeting that are, that are more, that are more qualified to do so. I will say that, um, we are still, I, we are still waiting on, on executing the loan agreement, and Katie may might want to talk about filling, filling in the blanks.
Sure, I'm happy to. Um, the city is working not only with Corolla, but also with our financial advisor, um, Alex Hamler, to do a cash flow analysis to ensure that we do have sufficient cash on hand. We're also working with, um, the bond attorney in, um, the city attorney's firm to make sure that we're integrating and making sure that the WFIA loan documents and the SRF loan documents and the planning SRF loan documents are all in alignment so that we don't delay any financing from one or the other because there's any conflict in them. So it's definitely a, um, complex financing. It's not as straightforward as going and getting a mortgage for your house from one lender. Um, and so I would say that we're looking not only at the, um, bridge financing, but also, or bridge, how, how we would bridge if we needed to bridge. And I think we all, well, I don't want to speak for other people. I think that there is a need to make sure that we have bridge financing as an opportunity in case we need it. Um, and that's what we're pursuing right now.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you. Thank you all for contributing your answers. Uh, Mr. Mayor, turn it back to you.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Excellent questions. I appreciate it. Um, Kyle, I think, um, I know, at least in my opinion, that, um, it would be helpful to get, um, for council and the public, um, a written summary of the deltas you talked about with regard to the baseline budget of 125, 941, and the current projected 144, almost 145 million. Um, verbally, I get it, and I, being part of the subcommittee with Councilmember Heller, um, I, I understand it and, and have that, but I, I, I think we owe it to the public to kind of, um, to, to very succinctly identify the major categories and, and what occurred, uh, with regard to major cost changes. Because going from 126 to 145, as Counselor, Councilmember Heller, um, spoke to, 15% is a significant increase. And we've talked about, to be very candid, issues with the original RFP, which was not written by Corolla. I, I understand that. Um, you were not, your group was not the program manager then, but, um, concerns that it was written to, um, these are my words, to look a bid that was, um, the lowest price possible, and perhaps, um, that resulted in, or that, that, that caused the bidder, this is no reflection on, on the bidder again, to look for areas of compromise to try to meet that lowest cost potential for the WRF facility. And, um, in my personal opinion, having been on the WRF subcommittee almost from the inception, um, that has resulted in a huge number of, uh, PCOS or change orders that, uh, the city has had to endure, pay for, um, as a result of, again, what may have been, unfortunately, um, a low bid based upon a document that was written that, um, I don't know, I'll just use the term was inadequate, and I, I don't want to go back and, and, and repeat history, but it's important for people to hear this and understand that, that in my opinion, these are, this is a large number of project change orders for a project like this. And to, to get, um, another, um, set, um, to the tune of about $600,000 is very concerning. And I know you've vetted it, we've talked about it in detail. Um, but I, I, I want to make sure that we're continuously sharpening our pen, looking very closely at the need and the justification for those in the future. Um, I will say that with regard to the archaeological issues, um, I, I realize how significant those are. Um, we're in an area that is rich with, um, heritage and, um, cultural remains. And so, unfortunately, it seems like as we continue to move forward, new discoveries are made almost daily that add to the cost because of the need for mitigation. And, and I'm, I'm not sure, um, of what you do with regard to that, but, but it is what it is. Um, the, um, the contingency increase, I understand. I think we're looking for answers, as Councilmember Heller noted, with regard to things like the soil slip and, and mitigation required for that, um, and, and just trying to get an understanding of what the, the final costs are going to be with that. And, and, and just feeling that we need to push back significantly, um, with our design builder, um, on these issues that may not have been, um, the result of anything that had to do with the city itself. My last comment is, is program management costs. Um, there, we had a discussion in our subcommittee about, um, additional outreach. We want our businesses and public to know what's going on, but this council, um, prior to you being a program manager, raised concerns, um, a couple of years ago about the outreach budget and the amount that, um, was budgeted and it was ratcheted back. Um, I want to make sure we're looking very closely at that and, uh, that we're achieving, obviously, um, adequate and proper notification for both public and businesses, but at the same time that we're not continuing to spend huge sums of money on a bucket that's already been identified as one that's, that was way oversized in the past. Um, I appreciate your candor. I appreciate, um, you know, council's questions, um, about costs. We're- We continue to hear from the community. At least I do. And I heard Councilmember Addis kind of allude to this, what's next? How much more can we tolerate? And I want to make sure as a program management group and as a council that we're, we're not riding on the laurels of low interest loans and the benefit that produce. Because I can tell you, if we did not have the debt service savings that we are realizing right now, we'd be in a heap of trouble with regard to costs and rates to our ratepayers. And I believe, speaking, I won't speak for all council members, but I, I think I, I have a sense that we have zero tolerance for any rate increases, literally. And I know we've been assured once again that with this increase, again, that it's not going to impact rates. And my gosh, you better not, I guess, is, is the message. And lastly, I remain concerned about SRF, the timing issue. And I do know, to a significant extent, it's out of the control or the hands of you and everybody that's trying to get this thing done with SRF. I, having been again, on the Subcommittee and vetting this in detail, it appears like they're impacted from a staff standpoint. They're having significant trouble meeting deadlines and getting commitments out. And that, that really concerns me. And so I just, I'll echo the comment that was made by, about bridge financing and making sure that we have a plan in place to address that. I know Mr. Handler, a rate consultant, will be looking at that for the city. But it's important for this council to hear that as soon as possible to begin to understand. We are going to be going through large amounts of cash over the next 12 to 18 months unlike we've ever seen on this project at all. And cash flow, as I've stated so many times, is critical. And we need to have a plan to be able to continue to pay for the costs incurred with this. Lastly, I will comment on issues that have to do with COVID and COVID related costs. I do understand that. And again, I want to, want to say to you, thanks for being open, candid, and honest, which is what we would expect. But I think you're sensing the need to really get a handle on this, obviously limit any further cost increases. And hopefully, I'm hoping you're going to come back and tell us, my gosh, it's not going to be 6.2 million dollars. It's going to be less than that because of the things that we've uncovered or found. And so, thanks for allowing me to ramble and share frustrations, not, not pointed directly, sir, at you, but just concerns overall about, you know, a significant increase in costs. And personally, you know, I have zero tolerance for any rate increases for our ratepayers. So with that, thank you for listening. And I appreciate you being here this evening. This is a quarterly report providing input. And unless there are any other inputs that people would like to make.
Mayor, if I, if I may?
Absolutely. Yes, Scott.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to clarify a point in Kyle's presentation. We did receive questions from a CFAC member and a member of the community. Kyle sent over responses to me, seeking clarification on just a couple responses. So those haven't gone out yet to those individuals. I just wanted to clarify. But that we'll hopefully send out tomorrow. Just had to do some check ins on a few things.
Appreciate that, Scott, very much. Any other comments, council members? Seeing none. Thank you, Kyle, again. Yes.
Open public comment?
Oh, yeah. Yes, thank you very much. I should do that, shouldn't I? So this is public comment for item C-1 on your agenda this evening. Public comment is now open. Anthony, do we have any public comments, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I see Betty Winholt's. Were their hand raised? I'm going to go ahead and unmute Betty.
Certainly. Welcome back, Betty.
All right. Betty, are you there?
Okay, apparently I need to click twice and not once.
Welcome back, Betty.
Thank you. A couple of, well, several questions. The information was given out, a few other questions maybe for some more information. I understand about the $6 million that hasn't been approved. And that, are those unapproval? That, I think it was said at the CFAC meeting the other night, that half of that has been approved and half hasn't. So my question is, is that because there are missing receipts or they're lost? Or how is it that that full reimbursement did not happen? That's my first question. My second question was about contingency. And you've pretty much talked about that. A third question, you made the comment that we really don't need to talk about who's to blame for this or that, particularly in regards to the, the soil slip and the second soil slip. But why it's important to me as a ratepayer is because you may end up asking me to pay for that. And it seems to me if that was a responsibility of Black and Beach, or if that was responsibility of Corolo, that they need to absorb that cost. So it's important to me to know who is responsible for that, because that's who's going to end up paying for it, hopefully. I also understand from the contract with Corolo, this is another question, that the person that replaced, Mr. Casares, is supposed to be an engineer and that this current gentleman that we met this evening is not an engineer. And so how does that jive with our contract? And I believe it was stated at the Rotary today that there's going to be some money that we owe to Black and Beach because they're not working right now because certain permits weren't given. And there's another question I have about, you know, who was responsible for that permitting? We've, for years, Cal has said to the city, you know, you're doing it backwards. You need to get your permits first before you go before Coastal. And you insisted on doing it the opposite. And so now we're going to be paying for a six month delay. So I guess what I want to express is my frustration, along with the frustration that some of you may feel, is that we feel that you were forewarned. We suggested to you through experts that these are things that were going to happen and you chose not to believe us. You chose to go to the west side of the highway instead of the east side, knowing that there were archaeological sites there. So I just want to say, you're not having a lot of credibility with the public on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Anthony, other public comment, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Great. Thank you so much. I will go ahead and close public comment. Thank you for your questions, Betty. First, my statement with regard to blame was not to finger point, but certainly looking to find out who's responsible for the soil slip and who's responsible for bearing the cost. And I share your concern with regard to that. That will be vetted in detail and reported on. So I do concur with you with regard to that. I'm not sure if any staff member can speak to what Ms. Winholt's was talking about with regard to the $6 million reimbursement and the question on, are we getting that? Does that resonate with you, Scott, or Katie?
Not, not sure what that was referencing. We did speak to Rotary today. Joe Mueller gave an excellent update to, to the folks who were actually there and heard. And basically, what we described was some of the change orders that have already been approved. And one of those was the fact that we were delayed, not by any fault of Corolo or anybody else. It's just the fact that some, sometimes we had surprises come up and projects are as complicated as this one. That being the red-legged frog. That was after we'd already conducted an EIR in which all the, you know, pertinent agencies were consulted with, including the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Group, who had no comments on EIR related to red-legged frog, as far as I recall. But then because we were getting federal funding, there was another round of review, which Fish and Wildlife then raised the issue of red-legged frog. And we had caucasus going before us, and there was no issue of red-legged frog through their process. And they were having federal funding supporting their project as well. So logically, we thought we would get the same sort of approach, but that's not how it went down. That led to a significant delay in getting the permit to allow us to start the project. And that's what I referenced in the discussion with the Rotary Group today. And this has been discussed at council as well numerous times. So I just want to make sure that's, there's no change in the story.
Right.
With regard to west versus east alignment, the east alignment has been determined to be completely infeasible. In addition to the costs, far exceeding whatever issues we're running into with archaeological issues on the west, western alignment, and not to mention other issues with Caltrans that largely made that project infeasible. We'd have to bore through a mountain to get there. So all those things were shared with the public. And council made decisions to continue with the western alignment based on the infeasibility going to east, east alignment. Happy to answer any other questions raised.
Just the one question that had to do with, and we, I believe we addressed this at the last meeting, but I'm happy to have you comment on it again. Program manager, is there a requirement for that individual to be an engineer?
Well, we, we contract with Corolo engineers to provide overall program management services. Kyle has taken the lead role, which is important that we have a single point of contact. But we have a team approach, just like we had with Eric Casares in lead. Eric Casares happened to be an engineer. And that's great. And there's some pros and cons to having that individual be an engineer or not. But the team approach still provides those engineering services. At the end of the day, Rob Leibig is our, our civil engineer and has, you know, puts the stamp on this project. And that's ultimately where the responsibility falls as far as ensuring that we meet those, those needs. But we feel that Kyle's done an excellent job leading this project and that the team approach is addressing any of the engineering needs we may have.
Great. Thank you. I think that covers the questions that were asked. With that, unless there are any other comments, I will move on to agenda item D. This is council declar-, oh, Kyle, thank you again for being here. I'm sorry. If you've already gone.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you again. Thanks.
City Council, thank, thank you. I appreciate it.
You bet.
You too.
Item D, council declaration of future agenda items. Folks, is there anything that's burning that you would like to see added to the agenda? I see Councilmember Addis has had it up. Yes, Councilmember Addis.
Yeah, I'm not sure that it's a full staff report or agenda item, but as we go into the goals-making process, I was hoping to ask my colleagues for support in a couple of things, possibly a facilitated process or opportunity, looking at opportunities for a facilitated process that would focus on norms and team building. And really with this idea that although we differ on many things, I think I could say for all of us that we have the shared goal of making the best decisions for our community. And I think we're in a really good place to kind of level up as a council and go through a process to do a little bit of team building and also to kind of rethink or reimagine our goals and mission. We've had the goal of fiscal sustainability for a long time because we didn't have fiscal sustainability. And so, you know, rethinking, is that a goal that we have? Or is that just a part of the fabric of who we are? And I guess what I'm asking is for support to look at options for, you know, facilitated process around both, team building and kind of thinking about our goals and mission.
Great. And I, I would support the team building effort. We contemplated that or talked about that a couple of, maybe two or three years ago. For some reason, it didn't happen. But I would be supportive of that. First of all, looking for any heads or hands or can't see everybody's face.
I just raised my hand, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. I see it now, Jeff. Go ahead.
If I don't do it at least once a meeting, I lose that Gilson completely.
Good job. Yes, I see it. Yes. And Councilmember Barton, I see your hand as well.
So, so Mayor, what, I know we've talked about goals. We're going to do something with goals. What is the schedule and your thoughts about when we'll be talking about goals again?
Great, thanks. And Scott, you want to just speak to the schedule for that?
Yes, happy to do so. Great question, Councilmember Heller. You know, right now, we're sort of in the, getting close to the beginning of taking input from the community. And we're also going to start the outreach to the various advisory boards and committees in the city to get their input. They get public input through surveys. And then we would have some kind of community forum, whether it's hybrid or all Zoom or in person, you know, remains to be seen. But I imagine that that would transpire either in August or September. And then council would consider, you know, kind of a formal thing, you know, either in September or October. But hopefully more closer to September. So usually when we host those community forums is when you would have some kind of facilitated support for that. And I think what Councilmember Addis is asking for is could we expand that to include, you know, team building and sort of mission building on top of the goals process. So we've had a, we've been lucky in the past to have someone donate their time for free to support that effort. But that gentleman is now running the Slow Community Food Bank. So you don't expect Eric will be lending services to us anytime soon. He's got his handful, for sure.
Well, I have no problem at all with, with Councilmember Addis's suggestion, as long as we don't have to pay for it.
Yeah. If council was interested, I guess if you want to go too far afield, we would bring back an item for consideration, right? That would look at those issues.
Yeah. And you, you had majority support. I saw heads and hands. So that's a yes. And the schedule for goal setting is, as Scott talked about, I think it'd be good to do the team building prior to the goal setting. I don't know of Councilmember Addis if that's what you had in mind, but I think that would be good. I see your head. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea if we can, you know, look at the schedule for that. I do think team building before goal setting is a good progression of events.
Got it. Okay, got support for that. And other future agenda items? Hearing none? Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. The next regular meeting of the Morbey City Council will be held on Tuesday, June 8th, 2021, at 5:30 PM via teleconference. Thank you so much. Have a good evening. Be safe and be well.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.